All right, I'd like to call to order the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission Meeting of February 20th, 2018. If Commissioner Gerges, if you could lead us in the pledge.
My pleasure. Please place your hand on your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Victor. If I could ask Ms. Roberts to take role, please?
Chair Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Klinger.
Here.
Commissioner Gerges.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you Robin. Okay, so now it's time for the approval of the agenda, and so if I could read this first, by motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commissioner's staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And Director Landavazo has something to add at this time regarding the agenda, so please, Crystal.
Thank you. There is a change to the agenda. Just to point out, the notification that was sent out for both items two and three, the Minor Use Permit and Zone Text Amendment, notification was published in the mail and, I'm sorry, was published in the paper and sent out in the mail. Both of those notices had the correct location, description, and project number. However, on the agenda that was posted, both items actually reflect the incorrect project address. So at this point, staff's recommendation would be to continue both items so that we could post a new agenda with the correct addressing on there. However, the Planning Commission does have the discretion to hear these items tonight and take a vote, so we leave this up to the Commission's discretion.
Okay, thank you Crystal. Yeah, I was made aware of this before the meeting, that the, everything in the staff reports has the correct addresses, however, it is on the, in the subject line. And let me, if I could just check something real quick. Okay, so, so on the posting of the agenda, the correct addresses weren't listed under items two and three. My personal take on that is I think everyone who's here tonight has come here because they, they know what the issue's about. So my recommendation, and I'll even move to approve the agenda as is with the corrections noted as to having the correct addresses, but go ahead and hold these, hear these two items and move on and act on them tonight. So that's my recommendation, and I move to approve the agenda and to not continue the items and just continue with it. So I'm opening the floor for any other commissioners, what you think about that.
Does anyone in the audience have an objection?
Well, we're not really open for public comment now, can we?
Well, no, I don't mean that, but if someone has an objection, then. It's up to you as the Commission if you want to solicit input from the audience. People are here, obviously, because they want to speak on the agenda items. The question would be, do you want to make a decision just based on what you hear tonight, or take their comments and then continue each item to make sure that somebody else who may, may have seen the posted agenda only didn't realize where it, where each item was?
Can I, can I get a clarification?
Yes, Commissioner Aguilar.
Sorry, may I? Sure. It was ma, the proper addresses on the mailings that went to everyone within the vicinity of the locations?
Correct.
And then, and how about the city website? Is that the correct address, or is it this one that we have incorrect?
The city's website has the full agenda posted on there, so this exact agenda as it appears with incorrect address, along with the staff reports that have the correct address.
And then the posting in the Seal Beach Sun was correct?
The public notices were correct.
Now, from a legal standpoint, what's required for proper posting?
Well, legally, the, the strict answer is, all of the addresses in every notice should be correct. So the mail notice and the published notice were correct, the agenda that was posted out in front of City Hall, and the agenda online, just the cover sheet, the agenda itself had the wrong addresses, but the staff reports had the correct addresses.
I, well, I guess my question, is there a minimal requirement? Meaning, can any, could this be contested at a later point if we, if we proceed it?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, any other, any commissioners? Any questions? Again, I made a motion to go ahead and not continue the items and, and hear these items and act on them tonight. Does anyone want to second that, or have a separate or a different motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a call for questions, so we can go ahead and vote. Everyone vote, please.
I think that's unanimous, pardon, it's going all right.
Yes, so unanimously, we're going, we all agree, we're going to move forward and discuss and act on these two items tonight.
Okay, then if I can just clarify, so then for item one, the correct address is 350 Main Street, Unit C. And for item, oh, there was item two, and for item three, the correct addressing would be Surfside Colony.
Yes, item three is Surfside Colony. Okay, good, very good. Thank you, Crystal. Okay, so, next on our agenda is oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. So if you're here to talk about something that's not one of the two items on our agenda, then now is the time to do it. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period now. So anyone who'd like to come say anything about, anything on the agenda, please come forward.
Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. I'm glad to see this Surfside Colony is going to be updated by a new code, but I'm waiting for, and that is in Councilwoman Deaton's area, and I'm waiting for her to do Old Town and the rest of the city. We want the rest of the city to be updated with the California code, because there's a lot of problems with our streets and with our setbacks down here, and there's also units down in Surfside. So if they can get Councilwoman Deaton to put this together for you to plan, I will see Council, Councilwoman Deaton come and do it for the residents of the rest of the city, and I'll keep pushing it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing nobody, we are closing the open communications period, and we'll move on to our agenda. Next is consent calendar. Approval, we have one item, the approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes from January 16th, 2018. Do we have any comments or anything to speak of, commissioners?
I do.
Yes?
I addressed a question at the last meeting, and it's been outlined in the agenda that would be looked into. I was wondering if there was any sort of updates regarding the pier renovation article that I brought up at the last meeting.
I'm not sure if this is the time to, to talk about that, but it, do, do the notes reflect your question correctly?
They do.
Okay, because all we're doing right now is saying that the notes are okay.
I gotcha.
So.
So we, we can't, so we can't cover old items?
I can cover them in the Director's report.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
We can absolutely do that. But are there any questions about the notes? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
A move we accept a minute, says, as recorded.
I'll second.
All right, very good, we have a second. Could everyone vote, please? All right, notes are approved, thank you. Okay, moving on to the, to the scheduled matters. Item number two, oh wait, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm looking the wrong place. There we go, item two, Minor Use Permit 18-1. Let me ask, do we have a staff report, Mr. Fowler? Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Landavazo?
Mr. Fowler will be giving this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Chairman and fellow commissioners. Item two this evening is at 350 Main, Unit C, for Minor Use Permit 18-1, to allow the operation of 1,100 square foot accessory grooming use in conjunction with the retail use on the first floor of a two-story commercial building on the Main Street specific plan zoning area. This being Main Street and this is Pacific Coast Highway. This is the site, this being 348 Main Street, this being the 350 Main Street building. On the first floor, right about in this location, is where this proposed retail and pet grooming use is being proposed. It's in the Main Street specific plan, and within the municipal code, the pet service requires a minor use permit to be approved by this body to allow that type of service. Here's a layout of the first floor. This being Main Street, this is Pacific Coast Highway. Retail unit space C is in this location right here, again, it's 1,100 square feet. Alley being back here, and the parking being right back here for this particular use. They do have doors over here and over here to enter into this location. As you can see from, this is a blown-up floor plan of the particular use. There's a door right off of the garage to enter into the retail space and off of Pacific Coast Highway. The retail space is located in this area right here, approximately 439 square feet. The grooming area is in this particular area with three grooming tables and wash tubs in this area, with retail storage being located at the rear of the store over in this particular area. This is about approximately 25% of the floor area, or 271 square feet. The parking for this was established because it is a retail use. The ancillary use, along with the retail, is done at 500 square feet for one parking space, with this being 1,100 square feet, it only requires two parking spaces. The, there was no correspondence for this, the, the legal ads for this, and we've received nothing from any residents in the neighborhood. With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you Steve. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
The, that's, I'm, I'm looking at the diagram, sorry, is that a staircase, or is there any, is it an open space? I know, I've been to those locations, an open lobby. Is there an open throwaway from the lobby to this facility, to this retail shop, so is it, or just single, single door?
You can enter from actually the sidewalk here, off of Pacific Coast Highway, or off of the back area. There is not a, a entry directly from that lobby.
And it's not open in any way, though there's a wall there, solid wall?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
All right, at this time, we're going to open this up for any public comment on this particular item, so if anyone in the audience has anything to, to add, please, we ask you to step forward. Is the applicant here? Oh, okay, cool. Do you have anything you'd like to add or say, or, you don't have to, it's up to you.
Do you need me to go up there?
I do need you to go up there if you want to say something. This is your 15 minutes, right here.
No, 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 Dale Austin, how's it going? Coming back to your question, for the, the entrance, it's on the lower section where you're entering from the garage, the, kind of where you see the staircase to the far left, there's another set of doors, that's just all the way to the bottom, there's another set of doors with a glass partition that does go into the lobby, but it's not an open space. So you have like the lobby where you have Duck's Pie Shop and kind of the big opening area, a set of glass doors that go to the parking space, and then our doors behind that. So for people, pets, et cetera, there's no, there's never going to be a, like, direct throwaway, but there is access for people if they want to get it, but it's two sets of doors.
Okay, I, I just say, no, why am I, I, I realize that the other space on the other side of the lobby is a, is set up for food retail, and so I wanted to see if there was sort of...
Right, yeah, so this, this has no direct, the only direct is into the garage or to PCH. And then another set of doors.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to step forward and say anything? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the open comment period. Any commissioners wish to ask anything? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
A move that we approve the permit.
Okay, very good.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all right, so we have a first and a second, please vote, everyone. And it passes unanimously, unanimously. All right, good luck with your pet store.
And, Mr. Chair, there's a 10-day appeal period from this decision, it starts running tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Grayson. Okay, moving on to item three, Zone Text Amendment 18-1. Director Landavazo, do we have staff report?
Yes, we do. Okay, so tonight we're here for Zone Text Amendment 18-1 regarding residential development standards in a Surfside Colony area, which is Zone Residential Low Density 9, nine units per acre. In November 2017, the City Council directed staff to work with the Surfside Colony Homeowners Association so that we could address the need for realignment between the city's existing municipal code and the existing development patterns in Surfside Colony. Some of the properties that are currently existing in Surfside are designated non-conforming, which restricts certain remodels and improvements that they can make to their properties. Through working with Surfside Colony Board of Directors, we were able to determine potential amendments that could remove the non-conforming designation from some of these properties and allow others to develop, develop in a manner that's reflective of the existing characters, characteristics in the area. One of the common non-conformities in Surfside Colony is the front yard setback for A Row and B Row. In these rows, the front yard setback is taken from Surfside Avenue. In most cases, the garage is built to meet the required setback while the second and upper floors were allowed to cantilever to the property line. This is no longer allowed in Title 11, so these existing properties are now non-conforming. The proposal in front of you, one of the amendments is to allow the cantilever to be restored on A Row and B Row, it's currently allowed on C Row. Allowing this cantilever would take away the non-conformity from some of these properties and allow the others to develop in a characteristic that's similar to the surrounding area. Similarly, properties on A Row, some of these lots have lower elevations as you move toward the sand. The code currently allows for raised walkways on A Row, but these walkways have to be provided at a height not to exceed two feet six inches. However, out in Surfside Colony, there are several properties that have that raised elevated walkway that exceed that height limit. They were previously constructed at a time when they were allowed, excuse me. We're now proposing that this be allowed again in the area. If you go to the next slide. You'll also notice there was a revision placed for you. The amendments that went out were the ones down at the bottom, where in subsection L2, you'll note that the amendment was for lots in A Row. The elevated walkway is being proposed to allow, to have a maximum height of nine feet above grade. When consulting with Surfside Colony, their only designation was for lots 92A through 118A, because the topography is different for these lots as compared to the rest, so it makes sense for these lots to be able to have that increased height as opposed to the other lots on A Row. Additionally, Surfside Colony Board of Directors, since we were taking a look at the development standards that apply to Surfside Colony, they identified amendments that were necessary or that they were requesting for the decks and roof screens in the Surfside Colony leased area. So if you can go back to the, when you look at the aerial, all of A Row is located along the sand, 10 feet past that rear property line is area that's owned by Surfside Colony and leased out to these residents who live along A Row. The code currently allows for some projections into that area, your first or second floor deck can project into that area. What Surfside Colony is asking for is that there's more flexibility in use of that area so that the upper floors are also allowed to have a deck that projects into that area, and for roof screening to be provided along with some wind screens that can be placed in there. These changes are all identified in section D of the proposed amendments on page five of the proposed ordinance, where it specifies that the upper floors can project out five feet for their deck and have a wind screen that comes up a little taller than previously allowed. In general, most of these amendments are, again, being requested to remove non-conformities for existing structures and to allow for some flexibility in use of the Surfside Colony leased land area. So that is staff's report, and staff's available for any questions that the Commission may have.
All right, thank you, Crystal. So if I could just go first, so first of all, now's the time we can ask questions of staff. So did you, were, I, I assume you worked real closely with the Surfside Board, and they have an architecture board and all that kind of stuff to come up with these, these new standards?
That's correct. They, they identified, and even they identified certain concerns that they had been having with existing development or proposed development. A lot of what we were seeing actually at our counter was people kept coming in wanting to do remodels, simple, small items that they were seeing, and then the project ended up being held up because it's, it's non-conforming. They were unaware it was non-conforming, and then that added another layer, which, you know, didn't pencil out to what the project was originally proposed for. We did work with Surfside Colony, they provided us sort of a wish list of what they would like to see, some of which we weren't able to support just because it would potentially affect different issues with Coastal Commission, so we tried to work back and forth to find proposed amendments that staff felt we could support were reflective of the area and wouldn't cause too much of an issue in the other areas.
Okay, so all these items before they have come before us have already been voted to and agreed to by the entire Surfside community?
What staff, what staff received, as far as how the HOA contacted their, their residents, that I'm not too sure. The Surfside Colony Board, we received a letter from them identifying that these were the areas that they were concerned with, these were the areas that they, the proposed amendments that they wanted to see.
Okay, so it's just a letter from the board?
Right. So however, they went through and contacted their residents, I don't know, but we did send out notification to those residents so they would be aware.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other commissioners that have questions of staff? All right, none at this time. Okay, so I said what, we're going to open this up for public comment, so if you have something to add or anything you'd like to contribute to our understanding of this issue, now is the time to step forward. Any order you want to go, we don't really care. And please state your name and where you live. And please state your name and, uh, where you live.
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Francie Winon, and I, uh, the Winon family owns A thirty-eight Surfside. The Winon family has owned A thirty-eight for sixty years. As you can imagine, we've seen many changes and events at Surfside. The family in the early years experienced fishing off of our lower deck. We've also gone through several Surfside flooding events, with the most damaging one as the recently, as the awful one in nineteen eighty-three, as you, well, some of you are not old enough to remember, but, um, as you all know, living on the Pacific Ocean has its joys and challenges. Hopefully, climate change will never create sea level rise and sand erosion here, but there's a valid historical reason why homes were required to have thirty-foot pilings and are now required to have massive engineered foundations. While I applaud the city of Seal Beach's efforts to work with the Surfside's Board of Directors to help home, homeowners of non-conforming homes come into compliance and to clarify Surfside's rules and regulations, I have some concerns regarding the proposed zoning amendments eighteen dash one. Number one, with Surfside's history and probable future flooding events, should Seal Beach legalize permanent structures on the leased land without the same foundation requirements as the rest of the home? A permanent structure can be debated, but as shown during floods, fires, and even nine-eleven, large steel supporting posts and beams tend to be very permanent. With Surfside permitting only a couple of these leased land ten-foot distance attached patios and decks, the liability of sand erosion causing structural failure is limited. Just a couple. By legalizing more of these permits, I would think that the city of Seal Beach could have a significant liability exposure. I'm not an engineer or a lawyer. As a past, past planning commissioner of the city of Napa, and having knowledge from a degree of architectural drafting, I would want my city attorney to diligently research any liability from this zoning amendment for the city. Number two, by codifying these zoning changes, has Seal Beach considered whether the Surfside Board of Directors has the legal ability to convey the ability of an A Row homeowner construct these structures on leased land without the knowledge or vote of the homeowner's shareholders of Surfside? Number three, I would suggest that the city of Seal Beach requires Surfside Board of Directors to notify neighbors of an upcoming hearing regarding a pending building permit as per city of Seal Beach's notification requirements. None of us were ever notified. As, as was determined at a recent arbitration between Surfside and the homeowner, the judge ruled that the lack of notification was a violation. And as a past planning commissioner, I totally empathize because I spent hours and hours, four years, in your spot, and I understand the issues of dealing with neighbor situations, legal situations, and I thank you very much for your commitment to the city of Seal Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winon.
One thing, we just received this-
Could you state your name?
Oh, sorry. Ella Rowe, I've lived in Surfside since nineteen sixty-five, permanently, and we received this, I think Wednesday or Thursday of last week. We called the city to ask what we could find out about this, they told us how to go online, we couldn't get it. My husband came and got a copy of what you're talking about today at the city, and this was the first time we knew about this. So when you ask, there are things on here that we haven't even discussed. One of the things that I'm looking at the city taking responsibility, it used to be our front decks had to be cantilevered or on pilings because the beach could wash away or we could have flooding, as I know some of you know about. And flooding can take away, now they're putting these concrete slabs for the ten-foot front deck and steel up to hold the second floor deck with no pilings, and it's not temporary that can be taken away, so, and we all are assuming the beach will never wash away, we have some kinda guarantee. The one thing I saw on here that I've only heard discussed once or twice in Surfside was, uh, C zero side yard, upon their, um, issuance of conditional use permanent development of two lots with a common side yard may be developed, incorporate zero setbacks on the common side yard position. And we haven't even discussed that except years ago, and if you went to zero lot line, then you had to leave six feet, so that you still have the same width of a house, but you have a side yard of six feet. This in here, there's only one lot it can be, and it's in here, that none of us, at least I had never heard about, and anyone else I've talked to has never heard about them talking about zero property line. So I would like more time for us in the colony to be able to look at these things. These are proposed by the Board, but many of us have never even seen some of these recommendations until we got our list today. And I was passing them around, and I passed them around to three or four people who had never seen them, and three people who tried to go on your website and couldn't get it. And I still don't know how, we tried after they explained it to us, we couldn't get it. I called the colony and they said, she can sit, email me a copy if I request it. Why didn't they email us a copy to everyone in the colony? They emailed us other notices to everyone in the colony, why couldn't this be emailed to everyone? Why should I have had to request it? So I would like you at least continue this so us in Surfside can look at it more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Steve Rowe, yes, I am the husband who came in this morning. Um, I am, first of all, I'd like to explain something that, uh, the young lady, Crystal, I, you're not Crystal, yes, you are, okay, that, first of all, we are not a home, Surfside is not a homeowners' association. It is a corporation that owns the streets, a hundred feet of the beach, a parking lot, and six lots, and that's where they're, they end. All the other properties within Surfside are privately held, just like Seal Beach. So it does sound confusing that, how do you work this, but everybody that buys a piece of property in Surfside becomes a shareholder, but that doesn't mean we are a homeowners' association, there are no CCNRs. So we have an annual meeting every year, um, July thirty or the thirty-first, whatever Sunday it happens to be, and we discuss items that are important. And I fear, I, I, I am concerned that there haven't been enough people aware of this complex amendment that affects, that could affect every single property within Surfside, which, not as privately held properties, but it also affects, um, well, it just affects everybody. So what I am requesting is that this amendment and this thing be tabled until after we have our annual shareholders' meeting, and these items can be discussed with the shareholders and property owners within the area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Hopping up here a little bit. Uh, my name's Casey Coltrip, I'm a longtime Surfside resident, and I'm also the vice president of the Board of Directors of Surfside Colony. Um, just wanted to give you a little bit of background, um, what we're really, we're trying to do here, the Board, we recognize that there's some houses that have been built many years ago, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, that Crystal said are technically today non-conforming. And we're, all we're trying to do is not make new rules, but just to ratify and clarify what's already existing in Surfside and make those particular buildings in accordance. Uh, we started talking about this on the Board about June or July of last year, and been discussing it at every board meeting, every board meeting is, uh, we have an agenda, and, um, it's been posted on most of the agendas, we've talked about it a lot. And, um, the, the big things that I think people conception is that we're trying to change the zoning and change the code, we're not, we're just clarifying what's existing there already. And the big one is the cantilever. We're not asking to cantilever onto the beach and make a, 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 a beach projection, um, those things are already out, already allowed, they're, they're okay. What we're saying is, the second, third, and fourth layers can have a deck, and they can have a, a glass enclosure around them, which is what people have been doing forever. Um, the other cantilever that we're talking about actually happens in the back of the building, they don't go on the beach, they, they cantilever onto the, the street. We have Surfside Avenue that separates A Rows in the front, B Rows in the back, and almost every A Row house has a cantilever on the upper levels, above eight feet, right in the code, that's, um, goes right to the property line. And so what we're, um, we're just saying is, those have been built for a long time, does this make them legal? Um, they've always been legal, they're built legally, and case in point, someone tried to come in and get a permit, in fact, I talked to Steve about this a while back, they couldn't do anything, they were, they were supposed to cut their cantilever off flush with their building in order to do a minor remodel in their house, so that's why the, the Board realized there was some, a problem with that. Um, the walkways are something exactly the same thing, you, some houses behind, we call it revetment, that's why they're only from A ninety-two to A one-one-eight, they've got a rock revetment built in front of them, and so their houses are, really, their views are blocked, so we thought, okay, these people need to have a higher deck in front of their house and a little walkway to get up there, um, they've been built like that for a long time. There's other places in Surfside that have these elevated walkways, but we thought it was only appropriate only from A ninety-two to A eighteen. Um, again, we're, our intent was not to change the code, but just to clarify it, so, um, we're not asking to build new structures on the beach, those things are already allowed in the code. And we also didn't go through, I heard a, a comment about a zero lot line, we didn't even, we didn't even touch that, this has always been in the code for a long time, so, again, three items, that's all we're doing, we're clarifying them, and we're not trying to change them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coltrip. All right, anyone else have any input?
Joyce Ross Parkey, Old Town Seal Beach, and, um, so does Old Town Seal Beach have the same problems that they're talking about? Now how can Councilwoman Deaton get this on the agenda and she can't get Old Town on the agenda? I was down here about a bathroom and a little forty-foot addition, and I was never notified by the lack of notification, a violation, that she had stopped all of the changes that the California government said we could make. I did not know that. I didn't get any letter in the mail, and now she's done it for another year. I know you don't wanna hear me, I can tell by the faces, but up in major world, you're building and building and building, more bathrooms, more laundry rooms, but I want someone, maybe it's gonna have to be you, Councilman Gergis, to let everybody know that we want the changes also in Old Town to abide by the California code, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ross. Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the open comment period. Um, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to commissioners to ask any questions, uh, I think I'll ask first, was there an issue with notification on this particular item?
Um, it's, as we discussed earlier, we sent out, staff sent out notification to everybody within a five-hundred-foot radius and publication was made in the paper. Uh, I believe what the discussion was with regard to not hearing about it is, is the discussion amongst the Surfside Board with the residents themselves. Um, one of the board members indicated that they have been discussing at every board meeting, whereas some residents feel that they weren't fully notified and there aren't enough residents who are fully involved in, in what the proposed amendments were. Um, I understand that some people don't have a clear understanding of what the amendments were, uh, because again, the reference to the zero lot line, that's not one of the proposed changes, um, for anybody who is interested, the proposed changes, um, are identified with either an outline, I'm sorry, a strike-through or an underline, any new language that's being proposed has an underline to identify it, anything that is being, um, proposed to be deleted or removed from the ordinance has a strike-through, so a line going down the middle. All of the rest of the language that's in there is just directly, um, taken out of the existing municipal code, and if it doesn't have a strike-through or an underline, then there was no change proposed to that area.
Okay, uh, thank you, Crystal, I have nothing else. Anyone?
Let me ask, I'm sorry, let me ask a question.
Commissioner Gergis.
Uh, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that we erroneously had the address on the notice, um, and believe me, I've seen this, something as simple as that completely undo something major in the past, so, you know, I'm a little bit worried that if there is going to be any opposition or potential legal action taken, you know, that would be an item to be contested, so, I, I'm, I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, uh, city attorney is comfortable with us moving forward, um, since there appears to be some division here about, about whether or not this needs to be approved by the Planning Commission at this point or not, so, so my question is, are you comfortable if we move forward tonight with this action, or would it be better to, for the sake of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, you know, hold the item over until we have, um, corrected the, uh, the notification defect?
Well, it's not the final decision, it's a recommendation to the City Council, so, um, whatever action you take, whether you do it tonight or another meeting, it's a recommendation and that will be advertised and noticed, and people will have an opportunity. So, um, generally, under noticing rules, the people who have the right to complain are the people who didn't get the notice and couldn't appear. Obviously, everybody who is here had the notice or was made aware and are here, they're not injured in any way. It's really up to you, um, it's if you feel more comfortable continuing this and having it re-noticed to see if there's any additional comments, or you can make your recommendation and people will have the ability to speak again. We're not talking about the notice that went out being in error, it was just the agenda, as I said, that was posted, um...
And if I could clarify, we are, we're not approving anything here, we're just recommending to Council-
That's right.
-for approval, so, yeah.
Ask a question?
Uh, Commissioner Campbell.
When is the next shareholders' meeting?
It's in July.
Late July.
It's July, we got a ways to go. I don't think you wanna wait until then.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, do we have a motion? I can make a motion, can I, as chair?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I move that we, uh, um, after holding this public hearing, we, uh, recommend that the, that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution eighteen dash three, recommending approval of Zone Text Amendment eighteen dash one to the City Council.
I second it.
All right, uh, if we can vote? We have three yays, two nays. Robin, do you get those? Did you get the yays and nays?
Sorry, Commissioner Aguilar-
Sorry, Commissioner Aguilar and Commissioner Campbell have voted no on the item.
Okay, and the motion, or the motion to recommend approval to council passes, okay? So, thank you very much, uh, so ends that item. We move on to Director's Report. Director Landavazo.
Okay, um, so as it was noted, the Zone Text Amendment, um, still has to be provided to the city council for their review and approval. Um, this time, I don't know what that date would be, I would assume the second meeting in March, but I would have to see what that agenda is, is like. Notification will again go out, um, it would be mailed to all of the residents within five hundred feet, or, I'm sorry, all of the residents that are affected, um, and it would be published in the paper as well. Um, additionally, there was follow-up for, um, a question that was raised by Commissioner Aguilar at the last meeting in regard to an article, um, that was posted identifying that there was, um, certain funding that was made available for peer improvements to various, um, beach cities. Uh, I did take a look at the article, what the article was identifying essentially was just noting that there were several beach cities that were making improvements to their peer at relatively the same time, and it identified what the general amounts were. I believe the, I, I don't remember the exact number, but the, the number quoted was actually at the very end of the article, and that was identifying, um, Long Beach stating that if they were to rebuild their pier, um, it would be at the cost of, of the amount that was identified, which I believe, and I, I can't recall what that exact amount was. Um, but Seal Beach did start that article, just simply identifying that we had the, the fire at the end of the pier structure and that it was undergoing renovations currently.
All right, very good. Um, anything else in the Director's Report?
Uh, no, but, uh, if there are any other questions from the commission, I'd be glad to help out with that.
I, I do have a question. Um, has anything happened to D W P property? I mean, or nothing?
Yes and no. There's actually been quite a bit of work going on with that, none of it, um, that you can see yet, uh, but the developer has been working primarily with the engineering department just to make sure, uh, they've actually complied with all of the conditions that were placed on it by the Coastal Commission for their coastal development permit. Um, there were other agency approvals that they needed, which I believe they've obtained, and now they're working, um, to get their grading plans approved, they're working to arrange all of the other, um, um, public improvements that are going to be necessary in the right of way. There's gonna be, um, I believe Central is gonna extend into that area, so all of that alignment is, is being reviewed currently.
Is there anything that's gonna come to this, this group, or is that pretty much a, that's already taken care of?
I don't believe, or at least not any time soon. Um, the specific plan's already been approved, so as long as they build to the specific plan, there would not be anything coming to this commission. Um, I believe eventually, and I, we don't even have any tentative plans for what's gonna be built in the visitor-serving parcel that was designated by Coastal Commission, um, depending on whatever use is proposed in that location would eventually come.
Okay, good. Thank you, Crystal. Uh, any other commissioner questions or anything you'd like to bring up? All right, not hearing anything, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.